Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District 13. Special Call Meeting on Tuesday, September 15th, 2015. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, welcome to everyone that is here tonight. Laura, if you would, please read the roll.
Louis, here. Landware?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Nichols? Absent. Palmer, here. And Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
Okay, thank you. As is our norm, at the beginning of each meeting, we read our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. The district's core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up on the agenda is the Agenda Approval Adjustments and Announcements and Correspondence. May I be looking for a motion to move forward the approval of the agenda?
Some of them. Second.
Move by Molly, second by Laura, discussion. Hearing none. Those all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The announcements are as follows: September 22nd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we have a regular school board meeting here in the community room. On October 13th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting, again, here in the community room. Next up is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, do you have any correspondence regarding tonight's meeting?
Mr. Chair and members, there's been multiple correspondence to the school board regarding an alleged social media comment made by one of its members. In summary, they have generally been to give the board input on any decision it might make tonight. Some of these are at your seats in your blue folders this evening. Thank you.
What I'd like to do is take just a moment and explain our agenda and what you can expect this evening, so if you would, please bear with me. My intention is to use my notes to make sure that I cover the points as clearly and succinctly as possible, so if I appear to be reading, it's because I am. But I do want to make sure that everyone understands tonight's agenda. First up on the agenda will be communications to the board. Under this topic, there will be an opportunity for people to address the board and provide input into this process. If you would like to speak, please make sure you have filled out a blue card. If you have not, they're in the hall, out back. We're giving three minutes for each speaker this evening. There will be someone at the table that first will be, or someone will be calling up, help me out, Nicole. Nicole will be announcing who is next up to speak, and then we will also be assisting you with staying on task with the allowed time. Once we've completed and everybody has had an opportunity to speak, the next item on the agenda will be, the board will be presented with information regarding complaints, and then board discussion will follow. So at that time, information will be provided for us. Following that, the next item on the agenda will be for board action as necessary and appropriate regarding complaints against a school board member. I guess before moving forward, I want to take a moment, first of all, recognize that what we're dealing with tonight is a highly sensitive and a serious situation. With that in mind, I would like to ask everyone here tonight to be respectful of each other. Please work to be good listeners, so those that are speaking can step away from the table and feel that they've truly been heard. So I thank you in advance for your cooperation on that. So with that said, we will move on to communications to the board. Citizens and employer representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time.
Alita Abella?
Just to be respectful while they were speaking, I truly appreciate that. We're going to move forward to the next item on the agenda, and that is going to be complaints against the school board member. And as I had mentioned earlier, what's going to be taking place now is the board will be presented with information regarding the complaints, and then a board discussion will follow. I would ask that we continue to be respectful of each other and allow the conversations that need to take place, take place. Thank you. The district's attorney, Karen Kepel, will be presenting at this time.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for the opportunity to present to you what we've discovered in the investigation, which I was involved in conducting. And for the benefit of the members of the community, just to explain my role, a week ago, it was the school district received notice, and I'll explain the details in a moment, but the school district received notice of the posts that you've all been discussing, which then triggered an investigation, which I was involved in, and I'm here to present the conclusions and what has been discovered, and then ultimately what your responsibility might be in light of your mission statement reflecting the core values and the school board policies. So I will begin by going through what we know to be true, and that is that on September 6th, 2015, at approximately 8:20 AM, a message to the inbox of the school district Facebook page was sent, and this is what I'm talking about here, that was sent alerting the school board that one of its members, Grant Nichols, had allegedly commented to a post at approximately 5:06 AM the same morning on the Star Tribune Facebook page. It's a bit of a complicated stream of how it appeared there, but it was put up there in response to an article that was somewhat unrelated to what ended up unfolding into what everybody has been talking about here tonight. I'm going to, and you'll have to forgive me for any offense, but I think it's important to read it for people who can't see it, or for whatever reason can't read it if it's not legible. So what it says is, no, they are just, and this is in response, his name you'll see is above the writing, Grant Nichols. It says, "No, they are just unsanitary by bringing water into a bathroom and making a mess. Besides washing their feet, armpits in the sinks in the bathrooms, powder on the toilet seat, touching doorknobs after they wipe their butt with their hands, they leave it a mess, and no one says anything about that. That's okay, though. You probably don't work with any of them." That is the comment to the post on the Star Tribune Facebook page that has triggered all of this conversation. Next, what happened, and if we could go to Exhibit B, the school, a community member sent an email complaint, and this is an accurate copy of that email complaint, and all of this, by the way, is in your packets, in your board packets. It was sent to the school district administration, some members of the administration, the school board members, except Member Nichols, members of the press, and certain Islamic and Muslim local organizations. And attached to this email was, is what you will see next. It's there. And again, it's the same post, it's the circle, the red circled entry in the middle. So there were two notifications to the school district in various ways by different people one week ago today, and that, as I've said, triggered a number of meetings and discussions and a plan as to how we should proceed from there in response to this. So one of the things that happened next was that the school board chair, school board chair Larkin, scheduled a meeting for the next day, which would have been Wednesday, at 9:00 AM, and called Member Nichols to that meeting and asked him to attend that meeting so that he could have an opportunity to present his side of the story. And I just want to, one of the things that hasn't been presented and discussed is the specifics of that conversation, and I want to share that with you tonight. And as I said, Chair Larkin called Member Nichols to ask him to come into the meeting, and this is a handwritten transcript of what was said. And it's written in the first person, so it's Chair Larkin writing his notes immediately after the conversation, so that the recollection was as fresh and accurate as possible. So for the first conversation, he says, or he writes, "I called Grant to inform him that the district had received complaints about comments that Grant had made on social media and that Grant needed to come in for a meeting. Grant asked me what's going on, and I again stated that the district had received complaints about him and that he had been made on social media and he needed to come in for a meeting. The meeting was set for, as I said, Wednesday, September 9th, at 9:00 AM, and Grant at that point had agreed to come in. And there was no specific mention of what the comments were in question during this initial phone call. Then, a few hours later that same day, there was another conversation between Chair Larkin and Member Nichols, and forgive me, but these are longer notes, as it was a longer conversation, but I think they're quite important and relevant to your deliberations after I'm finished here." And this is how they read, again, written in first person by Chair Larkin. "Grant called me. He told me he couldn't make the Wednesday, September 9th, 2015, meeting at 9:00 AM. I asked Grant if another time would be better, or if he was just not coming in. Grant stated that he had already talked to an attorney, and he said, 'I didn't do anything wrong.' He then stated that what he does as an individual has nothing to do with the district, and besides, my phone was hacked. At this point, I stopped Grant and asked him if he was aware of what social media post, of the social media post that was in question. He asked me questions about whether it was a post versus a comment, and then Chair Larkin acknowledged that it was a comment to a post. And then I explained that it was a Facebook comment that he had made regarding Muslims being unsanitary. At this time, Grant said, 'Yes, I wrote that, and I didn't do anything wrong.' He went on to profess freedom of speech and that he does as an individual, what he does as an individual, has nothing to do with the school board. He then stated, 'Besides, it's true.' This was followed by him telling me that the fix was to install B days." And I'm going to skip over one part of it that isn't as relevant to what Grant said, which can be shared later in more detail if anyone chooses to. "At this time, I told Grant that I am not going to debate his comment, but to try and arrange a time for him to come in and meet. Grant said he was being attacked. I explained to Grant that this is the same process the district goes through when there is a complaint, and part of the process is to allow Grant the opportunity to tell his side of the story. And as an aside, so I don't neglect to tell you this, Superintendent Kelly also encouraged, at least once, if not more often, encouraged Grant in conversations or communications with him to come in so that he could tell his side of the story. And that was even prior to this meeting tonight, that he was encouraged and invited to come in and tell his side of the story. 'Grant again stated that he would not be coming in because I didn't do nothing wrong,' that's what the quote says. 'I once again confirmed with Grant that he would not be coming in to share his side of the story, and he said he was not coming in.'" And Chair Larkin had explained the reason for coming in was that this was a part of the investigation, and it was his opportunity to tell his side of the story. You know, I also want to just explain process. Process is very important on all kinds of levels, constitutional and statutory, and I want you to understand, as you're moving forward with your discussions in a few moments, about what, if any, action to take as a result of all of this, that he was given notice. There's a statute that addresses removal of school board members, and it does permit removal of a board member for cause, and the removal must be, and explains the vote process, by a vote of at least four members, and there must be notice of the time, place, and object of the meeting provided to the member. And it's important that in your deliberations, you understand that such notice was provided in compliance with the statute, and that the reasons for the proposed removal are given to him, which they were multiple times, and as you know, from your own receipt of materials, Member Nichols was also included in the packet which you have before you, so he is well aware of the specific allegations and the process that we have gone through. And then the last portion of that statute is that he has an opportunity to be heard in defense against the removal, if that is something you should be considering. He has had an opportunity, I just want to clarify from a legal perspective, he has had opportunity to present his side of the story more than one time. As I mentioned, Wednesday at 9:00 AM, last Wednesday, the 8th of September, he was given an opportunity. He was also given an opportunity to schedule it at a different time, if that wasn't convenient for him. And then, of course, he was given opportunity to present his side of the story tonight, and obviously has chosen not to do so, and not to take that opportunity. And again, from a legal perspective, it doesn't really matter that he, well, it matters, but the fact that he has chosen not to attend tonight does not mean he hasn't been provided with opportunity. You have done, in that measure, what you've had to do. Then, also to assist in your discussions, I just want to go through, as I mentioned, the statute relates to proper cause, or having caused to remove the member, and that's not defined anywhere, unfortunately, so we don't have a lot of guidance. So it's really a judgment call on your part as to whether or not what exists here is proper cause. But I also want to go through the policies and the laws that are implicated by the discussions and the conduct here. And I'm not going to go through them in detail, but I am going to reference the numbers so that, and you have them all in your packet, so that you can read, if you want, the relevant portions of each policy. The first one would be Columbia Heights School Board Policy 209. It's the Code of Ethics, and I would call your attention in your packet to Page 3, Item F, at the bottom of that page. It says, "In fulfilling my legal obligations as a school board member, I will comply with all federal, state, and local laws relating to my work as a school board member." And then the top of the next page, it reads, "Comply with all school district policies as adopted by the board." The next item I want to call your attention is a provision of the Minnesota Human Rights Act, which is our state corollary to the federal anti-discrimination civil rights laws that have been on the books since 1964. This statute is Chapter, or Minnesota Statute's 363A .13, and that makes it an unfair discriminatory practice to discriminate in any manner in the full utilization of or benefit from any educational institution. And it goes on to list, in Minnesota, under Minnesota law, we have approximately a dozen or more categories that are specifically protected categories under our state, essentially our state's civil rights laws or human rights laws. And included amongst them, of course, are, well, I'll read them all, race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, status with regard to public assistance, sexual orientation, or disability. So that is a state law that is potentially impacted here or implicated here. The next policy in your packet to consider as a part of these allegations is the Equal Educational Opportunity Policy. It's Policy Number 102. And I'm just going to read a brief portion of that. It reflects the Minnesota Human Rights Act that I just, the portion of it that I just read, but this is in your board policy. The school district does not unlawfully discriminate on the basis of, and then I won't reread them, but it's the same categories of protected classes that I mentioned a moment ago. And then it also says, in 2B, "The school district prohibits the harassment of any individual for any of the categories listed above." The next policy that could be implicated here is harassment and violence. It's Policy, School Board Policy 413. And in the prefatory note describing the purpose of this policy, it talks about, the purpose of the policy is to maintain a learning and working environment that is free from harassment and violence on the basis of, and again, all of these categories are specifically listed. And I want to call your attention also to Section 2B, which says that for purposes of this policy, school district personnel includes school board members. Now, as you know, school board members, all of you are not employees. You haven't been designated as such by the school board at any point in time, and, which is one of the reasons we are able to talk about this as publicly as we are, because there are no data practices implications here. But just to be clear, that the harassment and violence policy specifically applies to board members as well. The next one is Policy 524, Technology and Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. And this is, this is a policy that it, as you know, all of you have signed user agreements, which contain statements that you have read and understand and tend to abide by, the school district internet policy. That's the same policy that all administrators, all employees, and all students are also expected to sign a user agreement for and abide by. And I will just read, you know, one of the, and I think it was referenced a little bit here this evening, one of the more contentious areas of the law these days is how far can we go on social media, and at what point do you no longer have protection, and at what point does your conduct, not in a place of employment or in a school setting, have anything to do with the school? And I think there's some clarity that you can get if you look at Page 5. And it specifically in your policy states that unacceptable uses of the internet when off-school premises also may be a violation of this policy, as well as other school district policies. So without going through an 11-page, single-spaced policy, I just suffice it to say that your policy, which is a classic, standard statewide policy on the internet, permits consequences to be imposed upon the individuals who are subject to that policy, even if they engage in the offending conduct, not on a school district computer, and not while in a school location. So that's something for you to consider. The final policy to consider is Policy Number 422.1, which is titled, "Respect in the Workplace." And this by virtue of the fact that the Code of Ethics, the policy on the Code of Ethics for school board members obligates all of you to comply with and uphold all the policies that you adopt and implement. The "Respect in the Workplace" policy is also potentially implicated because of the language that says, "We are committed to promoting and supporting a community where all people can work and learn together in an atmosphere free of disrespectful, abusive, or demeaning treatment. We value each member of the District 13 community for individual and unique talents, and applaud all efforts to enhance the quality of the school district. We strive to maintain a climate of mutual respect and support, constructive strategies for conflict resolution." So those are the policies and some of the laws that are potentially implicated by what we're discussing tonight, as well as the references many speakers have made to the core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. I also, at this point, that really pretty much concludes my remarks. I may have some more at a later time to help guide you through this discussion and process, but in terms of what has been, what has been discovered thus far, and in light of the policies and the laws I've referenced in your core values, in my opinion, there is proper cause for you to consider Grant Nichols' possible removal from the school board, as I said, under the statute, which is 123B .09. It takes four votes. And we've discussed in your packet the other options. One is to do nothing. One is removal under the statute, and then there's the option of censure. And I think we had expected Grant Nichols to perhaps be here to respond to the allegations, since there is a suggestion that there's a factual dispute as to whether or not he actually wrote the comments. And I, to that end, that really is a decision for you to make. It's a credibility assessment. The fact that he's not here allows you to conclude based upon what you see here, without the benefit of his input, whether or not he was the actual author, and whether or not that's relevant to you in your deliberations. I'm aware that he may have offered a statement of some kind, and I don't know if that is going to be read, but I will also say, at this point, that I've been informed that, as we were meeting, he has declined to resign. He has been invited to do so, to avoid having to go through further process, and by that I mean, this is all the process there is. This is all the process he's entitled to, is what's happening here tonight. I just mean by virtue of you having to do further deliberations, but he is declining to resign. So that leaves the decision with those of you who are here this evening. And for now, I don't have any further explanation for the legal context and the factual And for now, I don't have any further explanation for the legal context and the factual conclusions that I've made.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Before I let you sneak away from the table, I'd like to offer any questions that anyone might have for you. But just for clarification, the process this evening was the district, i.e., presenting the information and through the investigation, Grant Nichols having an opportunity to speak or someone speak for him. This would be that time, if that was going to happen?
Yes. And also, just from a due process standpoint, as I said earlier, he had that opportunity and declined to take it several times last week.
I understand.
Yes.
Okay. Before, our next step in this is going to be, we're going to stay on number six, and we're going to allow board discussion. But before we do that, does anyone have specific questions? Not that we can't have you come back if someone thinks of something, but before we let her, specific questions for her. It's just got to be board-related. I'm sorry.
I do have one question on the process. It was mentioned that there was a couple, you had phone conversations with Member Nichols. Was anyone else involved in that conversation other than you?
No, it was just me.
Okay.
From a, just from a credibility standpoint, as attorney for the board, which is, of course, my role for the collective whole of the board, when you're assessing whether something is believable or whether it isn't believable, one of the things that you consider, that I would always consider if I am assessing the reliability of evidence, is when somebody has a conversation and remembers specifics and writes them down contemporaneously with the conversation, it is far more credible. And I guess what I'm telling you is that I find these conversations compelling and credible.
At this point, I guess I would like to offer any individual board members, comments, discussion, or questions among ourselves. This is the, this is your opportunity to let us know how you feel about what's going on. Pick somebody or...
Can I start?
Molly, that's fine. Go ahead. Did you have a question about procedure or about speaking?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm sitting here tonight as a board member who's been approached by several members of the community. Many are parents, some are not. I'm also sitting here as a person who cares about kids first and foremost. And that being primarily right now, the focus is the kids in this district. I'm also here as a parent of children who will be judged at some point in their life, whether it's because of their disability, one of them, or the color of their skin. So this weighs really heavily on me. I am, I am very saddened that this has happened. I am sad that it might impact one student, let alone 20% of our population here in Columbia Heights. And we can't even say 20%, because this really is a family. And if it affects those 20%, it will, it will affect the rest of the student population. Unfortunately, I, I guess it's probably a good time for me to share that I had a conversation with Grant Nichols last week as well, Member Nichols, and I was hoping that he would, of course, be here tonight. I learned some information this evening from Karen that he also shared with me, that upsets me in his conversation. I called him peer-to-peer and said, "What's going on?" And he said, you know, "I didn't do it." But then he said, "But this is something that needs to be talked about," which to me implies that he does align himself with some of those beliefs, perhaps. Going further, that obviously, as many people have said, does not align with our core values or mission statement. A lot of people that approached me also shared many things, some of them being, no matter what, no one is free from the consequences of their actions. And I think that's kind of where I'm going to sit this evening. Other people have shared with me different stories of bullying over the years. And if we can't hold our students, if we do hold our students to that, we certainly must hold members of the school board to that level. I don't take this position lightly, and I would hope that everyone else here does the same. Thank you.
I just have a question of procedure. Are we discussing a motion now, or where are we at in?
We're having a discussion about the information that's been provided. And if you look at your agenda, we are on the complaints against a school board member. The board will need to discuss complaints against a school board member. So the, move further on in the agenda, there'd be actual, where there would be board action that would take place.
Okay, I have an old agenda, I'm sorry.
Okay, it would be the board action that would take place at that point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Any comments or thoughts that you'd like to share at this point?
Yes, I actually do have a statement. Member Nichols asked me to read a statement tonight, so if that's okay, I'd like to do that, Chair Larkin.
Sure.
Okay. And I, and I'm the messenger. Just please hear this. Dear community, fellow school board members, teachers, staff, students, Superintendent Kathy Kelly and administration, I am sorry, but I am not willing to attend this meeting due to safety concerns for both my family and for me. I am, I hope everyone can understand this is a personal matter and happened at my work. I am advised by others not to participate in this meeting. Please accept this letter as my formal apology for what happened on September 6, 2015, at around 4:00 a.m. It was not my intention to cause any damage or inconvenience. In retrospect, I fully acknowledge that this situation resulted from someone taking my phone and writing a comment on the Star Tribune Facebook page. While this is by no means an excuse for my negligence, knowing the cause will help me guard against future mistakes with my phone. It was done on my Facebook account, and therefore was a result of my carelessness with the security of my phone. So yes, I'm accountable for leaving my phone unattended and accessible. First, let me write how truly sorry I am to all of you. I do not agree with the comment on the Star Tribune Facebook site. I also think it was rude and insulting. This is why I was promptly deleted, and I chose to talk to the reporter to explain the situation. I do have the utmost respect for your religion, children, and culture in our public schools. I love embracing differences, and what is, what is your business is your business. Every individual is accountable for themselves. Issues change when two parties meet. This is not the school district's business or the school board's, in my opinion. I am your elected official, and I will meet with you with no politics involved. You are my bosses, and I do understand my role. I admit, will admit that I myself have had prejudices due to not knowing the Muslim culture all too well either. To not admit that would be a lie. I have always been one to believe that no matter how old we get, we are growing and always learning. I would very much be willing to grow and learn more if you would be willing to communicate with me. That is all I ever wanted during this. I would very much like for us to sit down and have an open talk to explain what has happened and to discuss how we can better our community together. It would be wonderful to connect. We are all equals. I would like to thank the board, think that our education for these students is more important than just explaining a terrible practical joke that happened on social media. Real issues matter, not worrying about public relations. Our focus should always and forever be about what's best for student achievement. This just shows how we need to work on our communications and connections with our community. The alleged evidence in this matter is based purely on assumption or hearsay, not fact. If the board decides to take action to remove me from the board, I know myself well enough. I will be at the district office tomorrow to file for a seat again. These seats have everything to do with our whole community. To all the parents in District 13, we are truly blessed to be here in District 13 and to have our children growing up and learning from one another. This school district really is about all of us, all the time, embracing the future and learning from one another. Again, I'm truly sorry for what happened. If anyone in the community would like to continue this conversation, please feel free to call me. And he gave his number, but I won't give it out. I look forward to hearing from you and moving forward together.
Do you have anything additional to add from your own perspective?
I guess I would say, I will talk about that when we have a motion.
Okay.
In front of us. I'll reserve that.
I've read these policies over and over and over again, and I've listened to all the comments of our community, and I've never before felt so incredibly honored to be part of this community. I, this is a difficult situation because it affects all of us. And I just, I see the compassion out there and the pain. And then I read through these policies, and I see where there are fairly clear violations. One of the ones that's my favorite policy here is, I've got to read this here, "The Code of Ethics is pretty good, but the respect in workplace." Our attorney actually went over part of this, but there's a section two, and then there's B. And the first one is, is valuing each other's work and roles, behaving in ways that show respect to cowork, towards coworkers, developing relationships built on trust, promoting a climate that is fair, supportive, and responsive, creating a welcoming environment through our words, actions, and physical surroundings, and encouraging open and honest communication. And the last one is celebrating our differences. And I see so many violations in here. And I would like to reserve more comments after we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, please do. Superintendent Kelly.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, because I am an ex-official member of the board, which means non-voting, I'm choosing to make my comments at this time because I really feel that the work of the board in the next segment of the, of the agenda is really up to the seated and elected board members. However, the Columbia Heights Public Schools has the advantage of having a rich mix of diversity, both in its students, its families, and its community members. This district is made up of students and families from around the world. When students, parents, and community members come through our doors, they do not forfeit their heritage. We celebrate that heritage, and we support them. The Columbia Heights Public School District Administration stands firmly behind its mission of providing worlds of opportunity for every learner, and its core values of community, excellence, collaboration, innovation, and especially in this situation, integrity, respect, and courage. The board has a serious decision to make tonight. In the deliberation of this decision tonight, let's remember to put children first, all of them. They are the very fabric of our learning community and this district. We have heard from staff, administration, students, and members of the community. Member Nichols' actions, whether inadvertent or inadvertent, and its implications are not representing any of them. Our mission and core values are at question. We need to walk our talk, live our values as models for our students. As superintendent of this district, it is my opinion that no lesser action than the removal of Member Nichols from this board will do.
Thank you, Superintendent Kelly. I too had prepared notes with the expectation that Grant would be here tonight. So as I go through my notes, and I will be reading them, they'll be based on that individual here and what I have to say. But I want to start by commenting on one or two things regarding his statement, is that although I respect an individual's concern for safety of their family and themselves, it disappoints me that there's that lack of faith in our community, that you can't come here and speak your mind. We had conversations tonight about what we would do if something were to happen. And in speaking with, and I'm going to give you the credit, Member Palmer, but that's where she said, "I have faith in our community, and I do as well." And I'm disappointed that that, if that was the reason for not coming tonight, that Member Nichols, or Grant, I will call him tonight, did not reach out to the district and express his concerns and allow them to do whatever they felt they could to make him feel more comfortable. So that disappoints me. Also, in response to comments in his statement of, "I didn't do it, I don't agree with it, and it's rude and disrespectful." Quite frankly, you heard the evidence presented, and I plan on rereading my notes in detail. I know what I know. I know what he told me. I know that he admitted to doing it. So I struggle and have struggled this entire week with what I was going to say this evening and the position that I've been placed in as a board member and a community member in having to deal with this situation. So I will now, and I'll probably ramble a little bit, but I will start with my prepared statement. Sadly, the district as a whole has been placed under a microscope as a result of one members, of one member, and in my opinion, we've been placed there rightfully so. I have been contacted by numerous constituents, staff of the district, parents, community members, and leaders in our Muslim community, community expressing concern regarding comment made by Grant and calling for his removal. I also know that there has been a significant disruption to the learning environment in this district, which in and of itself is unacceptable. Unfortunately, I believe this disruption goes far beyond the district. The community that we represent is impacted as well. As this community works so hard to promote the city of peace through collaboration with the district, welcoming diversity with open arms, this incident threatens to undermine all the hard work and accomplishments that have taken place thus far. Our community and our district are diverse. We sit up here, meeting after meeting, promoting, supporting, and touting how proud we are to have such diversity. Yet one individual feels the need to disparage a select group that is part of this diversity. My concern is, which diverse group will be his next target? There are those who feel I am being dramatic, and to them I say, "You are correct." This is a defining moment for this board. The district, and even more importantly, our children, for the district, and even more importantly, our children, what message are we going to send? Because without a doubt, we are going to send a message. As school board members, we are tasked with certain responsibilities. At the top of that list is that everything we do or say should be done with first keeping in mind what is best for all of our children and the district. I believe that as board members, we are held to a higher standard. And I will, in response to the statement, do believe that we are held accountable outside of a boardroom or a classroom. It was at this point that I had every intention of making the statement and saying, "I would like to pause for a moment and ask Grant to demonstrate to everyone that he does recognize what is best for all of our children, the district, and the community at large, and formally asking that you resign from the Columbia Heights District 13 School Board." So it said either way. I guess it sounds like we're going to have some significant additional conversation about this when we move on to our action piece. But I'll finish by saying that if you hear me repeat some of these things, because I think they're important in our decision-making process. But we have been placed here with the expectation that we do what is best for the district and our children. I believe there's an expectation that we make the right decision even when they are difficult ones. We have asked for and received input from our stakeholders, and I believe their message is clear. My hope is that as members, everyone is able to find the courage and strength... My hope is that as members, everyone is able to find the courage and strength to make the right decision tonight, and do what is truly best for all of our children, the district, and the community at large.
Any other members have any other comments, conversation before we move on to our next item?
I do have one comment.
Okay.
Perhaps it's appropriate, and forgive me if it's not at this time, but as we consider what action to take, Member Nichols has shown me, and I have seen it, a signed statement from his coworker, and he did not want me to bring it tonight because of concerns of the coworker and his workplace, admitting to doing this, and apologizing for how tremendously far beyond anyone can imagine this has gone. And so I have seen that statement, it's notarized, and I just want to let you know I've seen that as well.
Okay, in response to that, and I'm far from attorney, and I know that you are, but I would guess that that would qualify as hearsay?
You can take it whatever way you want.
Not only that, but I'd like to refer back to one of the staff's comments, that if, if we can't trust him to handle his own social media, I have concerns about the privy information that we hear on a, you know, day-to-day, week-to-week basis.
Hang on. Before we move forward, I asked, I asked our attorney to comment on the notarized statement from...
You are correct Counselor, it would be hearsay.
Okay.
So, it's hearsay, and also I would just add that a notarized signature simply means somebody has paid for the, it's not even a license, but paid for the ability to be a notary public, and it, all they attest to when they notarize a signature is that the person who's signing it is actually that person. They don't attest to the truth of the matter asserted in the document, so the fact that it's notarized is, is not of significant value. And in addition to that, I would say, the consideration for you to make here is that he didn't, it isn't my decision obviously, I am only your legal counsel, but you do have courage up there, and he didn't show that in attending this meeting, and instead sends a proxy who isn't, we aren't able to question as to reliability, so I, I wouldn't consider that information persuasive in the least.
Member Landwehr, you had a comment?
Oh, I do want to, also I forgot to say that he would show that to anyone who's interested, or he is, is open to discussing that.
Yeah, my, I guess my comment to that is, is that there's been more than one opportunity for him to be able to share his side of the story, so.
Ben, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I actually did speak with, with Grant about that, he had mentioned the notarized copy, and I said that he needs to get that over to the district immediately so it can be included with our information, because we certainly would need that type of information to make an informed judgment, and he declined at that time. So I, I'm uncomfortable with saying, you know, just trust me, you know, it's, that's, we need to have it in front of us.
Member Landwehr?
I think it's just another further piece about his actions, even since that, I forget the date, September 6th comment, his actions consistently have not been reflective of any of our core values. His, his lack of showing up to the meeting speaks volumes. I wish that Member Nichols was here this evening, because I fully intended to also ask him to resign. I think that would be the right thing for the, for the students of this district, so.
Anyone else have any additional comments or conversation under discussion?
I guess I'll throw in as well, I also am very deeply saddened by what's happened and heartbroken, so, and obviously, it's offended a lot of people, and I, I hear you, and I'm sorry, very sorry too. Just wanted to let you know that.
Anyone else comments, discussion, conversation before we move forward?
Actually, there just is one other thing I want to say too. When you're on a school Board, you're, you're, you can be individual members, but you always act as a Board, and this really shows you just, when you are, when you are, when you have a situation like this come up, it affects, it affects everybody, and it definitely affects the credibility of the Board. And I am so incredibly sorry, because this should never, in a million years, should have happened. I, it's, it's the unthinkable and the unspeakable, and I just, I just really want to apologize. I know I'm speaking for the Board even though I'm just a Board member, but that's how it kind of works up here, and I'm, I'm just very heartbroken and sorry, and I'm just so sorry. It should never have happened.
Karen, if you would, we're going to be moving on to the next phase, which would be the action piece, or as it's described here, is Board action as necessary and appropriate regarding complaints against a school Board member. I know you touched on it briefly, but as we move forward into that, would you please take the time for clarity for both us and the group to discuss the options that are available, and in the process of making our decision, what's involved as far as the voting process?
Sure. I think in your packet, we, you've got information about three, there are actually four, but as I indicated earlier, resignation is, is, will not be considered by him, at least as of this moment. So that leaves you with three, and, and, you know, you need to, I need to present to you, and you need to consider all three. One of them is do nothing. The second is removal under statute, Minnesota statutes 123B .09, and then the third option is censure. Censure does not result in any particular discipline or removal, and it is not governed by the removal statute that I just cited. It simply is a statement to the member that you don't agree with the conduct in which they engaged. So there are those three options, and at this point of the action, it would be up to one of the members here tonight to make a motion as to one of those options, and you will see in your packet that there are two resolutions. Obviously, you don't need a resolution to do nothing, but there are two resolutions reflecting the other two options, each describing the facts that have been presented to you, and the policies, and the core value statement, and the state and federal laws that are potentially implicated, and so you would have to be considering one of those, and if you choose, if anybody should choose to make such a motion relating to either one of them, I would recommend that you read the entire proposed resolution out loud.
Okay, so for clarification, as we move forward, we can do nothing. We could censure, censure, which is a statement that we don't agree with what had taken place, and we could remove him from the Board.
Correct.
And for removal of a Board, per statute, you need four Board members agreeing to do that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and for censure, it's a majority?
It's a majority.
And for do nothing, it's a majority?
Correct.
Okay, so everyone is clear as to the process as we move on to the next step? And unless there's any other questions, Board action as necessary and appropriate regarding complaints against a school Board member. The Board will take action as necessary and appropriate regarding complaints against a school Board member.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with a resolution removing school Board Member Nichols.
Have a motion to remove, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. So it opened for discussion.
I believe that what everybody in this room has said tonight speaks volumes. I, all but one person spoke of their support for removing Mr. Nichols, and we are here representing the community.
Sorry, Ken.
Yeah, I believe that back in November, twenty, I believe 2,800 people of our community spoke, knowing full well, you know, they should have known what Grant Nichols is and what he stands for, and they chose to elect him. And I, I have a very hard time overturning what they've done as a community. Talk about courage, I know I'm in a room full of a lot of people that think otherwise, but I so respect the people in the community of Columbia Heights through the democratic process, and there is, I don't know about the facts, and I tend to give people the benefit of the doubt. So, if they're, if the facts are true, and then, then, like I said, I think what happened was horrific, but I cannot, I have a hard time voting for removal for someone because of leaving their cellphone unlocked, and that's what it's at issue tonight.
But I currently would ask you to allow the Board to have their conversation, please, I understand you're upset, but, Molly?
Member Landwehr, I'd like you to consider however, not only that, the actual comments that are in question, but his behavior, none of it lines up. The Code of Ethics policy, the bullying statements, the, the ones that we've had in our blue packet that not everyone here in the room has seen, but that are absolutely horrific. Choosing to use the R-word, he's offending population after population. He has a history on social media, and this, I fear, is not going to be the last time our district is under scrutiny because of it.
And I would like to know exactly how Member Nichols would be on a reasonable doubt has bullied anyone through this, this particular action.
If...
I've just, I'd like to know of the Board members.
Ah, no. I, we've had a very successful meeting thus far tonight, and I would be extremely disappointed if we couldn't maintain that level of respect for all, so please, please bear with the process at the moment.
Okay, Karen?
I just want to interject that we don't have a standard of beyond a reasonable doubt. This is not a crime. It's, it's a violation of some state laws potentially, and also your, your policies and that our Board adopted. You just have to decide that it's more likely than not. And in his choosing not to attend, not to refute any charges publicly, and to appear in a meeting, he's chosen to allow the allegations to stand as they are. It is not beyond a reasonable doubt, just to clarify from a legal perspective.
Question, where does this standard more likely than not come from then?
Comes from, it comes from dozens and dozens and years of, of Supreme Court opinions across this country.
Relating to school Board, this particular situation?
Relating to all situations, in a non-criminal matter.
I have something to say if you don't, I mean, but I'm along you.
Go right ahead, I'm trying to clarify my comments.
When you talk about having to make difficult decisions, and this first and foremost is about our district and our kids, our kids and our district, the, when I leave tonight, regardless of the outcome, I will be able to put my head on my pillow, and I won't sleep comfortably, but I know I have told the truth. And I'm here to share that, I'm here to answer any questions anyone has about that, which is different than the individual that's here that we're discussing. And I am sorry if you're going to call me a liar tonight, Ted Landwehr, but that's how I'm going to walk away from this table feeling. I'm going to take a moment to reread my notes from a conversation with Member Nichols regarding what he said he did. Now, I'm going to finish my statement.
I am not wanting to be attacked tonight.
I'm not attacking you.
And I, I'm offended by that comment, and I'm offended by the attack.
I'm offended by the fact that you're giving someone the benefit of the doubt in inference or in deference, you're saying that you don't believe me. So, it's one of the two, and that's truly the decision you're making tonight, and I said I'm walking out of here knowing what I know and what transpired. So I am going to take a moment to reread my notes in full as to the conversation that I had, setting the stage, I had made a conversation as the Board Chair and invited Grant Nichols in to have a meeting for him to tell his side of the story. He agreed to come in at nine o'clock the following day, it was a Tuesday, and Karen referenced the dates previously. A few hours later, Grant called me back, and I will read my notes moving forward with this. I gotta find my second page. Grant, I'm going to have both pages before I start talking, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. All right. And this is not easy for me to, to share this information with this group, especially knowing or sensing the direction we're headed. Grant called me, he told me he couldn't make the Wednesday September 9th meeting at 9:00 AM. I asked Grant if another time would be better, or if he just wasn't coming in. Grant stated that he had already, and I want to preference him back up, but the first conversation, I had never made any comment about what the subject matter was. Our first conversation was, "You need to come in because of comments on social media." There was no specific topic mentioned at that time. So, Grant stated that he had already talked to an attorney, and he said, "I didn't do anything wrong." Grant then stated that what he does as an individual has nothing to do with the district, and besides, my phone was hacked. At this point, I stopped Grant and asked him if he was aware of what social media post that was in question. He specifically questioned me as to the word "post" versus "comment." I acknowledged to him that, yes, it was a comment to a post, and then I explained that it was a Facebook comment he made regarding Muslims being unsanitary. At this time, Grant said, "Yes, I wrote that, and I didn't do anything wrong." He went on to profess freedom of speech, and that what he does as an individual has nothing to do with the school Board. He then stated, "Besides, it's true." This was followed by him telling me that the fix was to install bidets. My response was what? I presumed that he took this to mean that I didn't know what a bidet was, because he said, "You know, those things they have in European bathrooms." My question of what had nothing to do with needing to be educated on what a bidet was or how they work. The what response was my disbelief as to what I had just heard. At this time, I told Grant that I was not going to debate his comment, but to try and arrange a time for him to come in and meet. Grant said he was being attacked, I explained to Grant that this is the same process the district goes through when there is a complaint, and part of the process to allow Grant the opportunity to tell his side of the story. Grant again stated he would not be coming in because I didn't do nothing wrong. I once again confirmed with Grant that he would not be coming in to share his side of the story, he said he was not coming in. So, that's what I know to be true, and the Board has to make a decision tonight, all the Board members have to make a very difficult decision based on that, and I...
Member Landwehr, going back to the fact that you said the voters spoke back in November, right now, the community is speaking, and we need to hear that and move forward, because we have students in this district that trust the leadership to make the right decision. And I am very worried, and I'm worried that you don't have concern for the students that have been offended by this conversation.
That is not true. I'm very, I'm very concerned about the students in this district, but I'm also concerned about due process. I'm also concerned about, this is a very, very serious motion, and as I said, it's undoing what a majority of Columbia Heights voters did.
But we are doing that with due process.
Right, and so, yes, let's, I will be happy to vote on this in a due process manner, but I take it very seriously, and please don't, please don't imply that I don't. I do.
Again, I'm sorry, but I, I just have to clarify, he, he has received due process. There is no further due process under the laws of the state of Minnesota that he's entitled to. He's chosen not to appear twice, and there is no further due process to which he is entitled.
Any additional discussion regarding the motion that's on the table for the removal of Grant Nichols from the school Board?
of Grant Nichols from the school board?
Just a comment, I would be willing to censor what happened, just want to make that aware.
Motion on the table is to remove.
Yes.
Any other additional comments or conversation?
Yeah, I, I have another, another comment here. If we were not to vote for removal, we will no longer seek, we will no longer be functional as a board. Because we would have one member that will constantly, not, not, maybe not undermining, but other influences, we would have one member that would constantly come under scrutiny in every single action that we do. We would cease to function as a board, and this district will lose trust in those that are responsible to oversee it. This, quite frankly, scares me. This scares me a lot. I, I haven't been able, I mean, well, I'm sure everybody here, you know, you're all here, you've all been worrying about this like we have. It's, I want this to move forward. I want to, I want to get this community, this beautiful community, back together again, because it's different than other communities.
Member Lewis is next. Go ahead, Member Lewis.
Member Landwear, I guess I'm, I'm specifically curious as to what, what your reservations lie in. If it's truly that you believe he didn't make that comment, then are you not concerned about his actions over the past week?
I, yeah, I, I don't know what his actions have been over the past week, I have not. I've heard stories.
You've appeared to have more interaction than anybody else with your statements sitting there. And I'd like to reference, I guess, you know what, I apologize, you had something else you wanted to say, I'll let you go first.
Oh, I do want to say that I, if that happened, what, what Member Palmer said, what would there be further division? I would leave the charge to get whoever did that removed, but I don't think that will happen.
Excuse me, can you clarify what you mean?
I don't think that, I don't think that Member Nichols will, I think he has been deeply affected by this, and he is, he certainly will be very sensitive to what's going on in the future, and I know he will take better care of his phone, so.
But so deep, so deeply affected that he couldn't show up tonight, Member Landwear?
I believe him, I believe his safety was a concern, and the safety...
Then is he going to feel comfortable being a board member in this district?
Yes.
Just look out, this is a beautiful community, and why would he be afraid to be here?
It is a beautiful community, right. Member Nichols has had, just remember what happened during his campaign, and what happened at that point.
That was, that...
Again, poor judgment that reflects on him.
Okay, hang on again, please, this is a board discussion, and I...
Give him the benefit of the doubt.
Well, I can assure you, I'm not going to. In fact, I would like to even reference your statement, his statement that you read, and him taking ownership and responsibility of it, and then yet saying it wasn't his phone. The community has spoken, they made it quite clear, they don't care if he wants to go with the, the other dude did it defense. They're saying he's not demonstrated responsibility through his electronics, or, and I don't know that, there's many people that believe that he didn't do it. I do not believe he didn't do it. I am your witness as to what Grant Nichols told me he did with verifying statements and conversations afterwards. The fact, but what, what makes me really nervous is, is that acknowledging I did it, saying I didn't do nothing wrong, and then saying the fix is to install a European toilet to address the unsanitary conditions, that scares me, that that's what we're going to have sit in on our board, and I'm not comfortable with that. What I will say moving forward, and we are going to attempt to move forward here momentarily after the superintendent speaks, I guess.
Mr. Chair Members, just a, a point of ministrivious, since the only person in possession of the statement for Member Nichols is Member Landwear, I think that we need to have a copy of that for the school district attorney and for, as evidence that that exists. In addition to that, I would just like to say, although I am not voting tonight, that this board is about governance of a school district. And right now, we are talking about one member's actions. As Member Palmer has pointed out, if the board cannot come to an agreement tonight on what to do with Member Nichols, it is about the board, not just Member Nichols. And as an ex-official member of this board, I would strongly urge that each member of this board considers that and what that does to this district, to our students tomorrow morning, to our community tonight, and in the future.
The mention of the statement, and I guess, in the grand scheme of things, it seems quite odd that the statement was just brought forward tonight, and that, again, we didn't have this information previously. None of these documents were provided, and, and even in requesting that they be here, post haste was refused, so I, I'm not sure where that benefit of the doubt, how deserved it is, but I want to take a minute to, to, before we move forward, to reach out to the individuals that have contacted me, the, the leaders in our community, the members of these significant groups that have allowed us our due process. As early as last Tuesday night, I had members of the Muslim community saying, what are you going to do? What's going on with this? And we told them at the time that we're aware, we take it seriously, there's a process in place. You have been extremely patient and reasonable, and I thank you for allowing us to move forward with our process. And as we move forward with our process tonight, I cannot predict how this vote will go, but I have, I guess, a feeling. And I want you to know that, in my opinion, you're, you're watching, potentially watching democracy fail. The majority is not going to potentially decide what is right for our kids in this district. And I will ask you, upon the completion of our vote, irregardless of the direction that it goes, as we move forward this evening, that we continue to carry forward with the respect that everyone has had for each other tonight. I understand the emotions and the feelings that are going to take place either way that it goes, but I ask that, you recognize that statute dictates we have to have four people. And if we don't have four people vote to remove, which is the motion that's on the table, we will not be able to remove Grant Nichols from the board.
Before we move forward, can I ask for one further point of clarification?
Yes.
From Member Landwear. It got a little bit distracted when I asked you for, for clarification about, if not about those statements that were made on social media, his actions over the past week, and you jumped right to this evening and his safety. What about the seven days prior to this? What about not showing up for a meeting? What part of courage, what part of our core values does that represent? And how are you okay with that moving forward?
And I would ask you, do we remove a board member for not showing core values? Because if we do, then every one of us is subject to being removed, and that scares me tremendously. Sorry. Because there's, I don't live up to those core values all the time. I try to, but I don't. Please don't remove me.
Any other discussion regarding the motion that's on the table?
I would say I do believe in those core values, though, and I do support them.
Okay, again, I, moving forward, I ask that the, the audience, please, please, please remain respectful and understand that...
I guess I'll call a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I actually just had one more comment. I had one more comment to make, too. That was because of incident earlier in the campaign, that was one of the things that I, I had spoken with Grant on a number of occasions, and I always asked him, you know, whether or not, you know, anybody was threatening him or anything like, because he, because he had had an incident once before, so, you know, I thought it was natural. And he said, nope, nope, everything's been fine. So, I mean, this is apparently a very recent fear, because he didn't have it yesterday.
So you're surprised at the...
At the claim.
At the claim of fear for family and himself.
And in our conversation last week, he referenced that he may not show up this evening.
Yeah, and he's told me that as well.
And that's concerning to me.
If I might, I think at this point, before the resolution is read, we need to consider not just what Grant may or may not have done, but what is in the best interest of this district, for the board, and for the children. And one of the questions we ask around here a lot is, how are the children doing? And it will be very hard, as a superintendent, to go back and report or explain to students in this district if we don't have some unanimous decision about board conduct, regardless of how hard it might be for all of us in this room, and what opinions we might hold, both as individuals and as a collective body. But this is a time for unity, to start a healing process for this district and for our students, and that is a broader context than some of the individual things that we have talked about tonight, and it is something that weighs heavily on my mind, and I know it weighs heavily on each and every one of yours. So if we can't do it for ourselves, let's do it for the children.
And, in the interest, in the interest of keeping things moving, understand that depending upon this, how this particular motion goes, there's other action that can be considered as well. But I, I would at least, in my closing conversation was, is in a statement that I just heard read by an individual tonight for the first time, the comments made by Grant were, and if they remove me, I'll just file again tomorrow. I say let them file and then let the public speak again. If you're going to fall back on it... If he has that kind of community support, we'll see him back at the table in January, so that's my thoughts, my closing thoughts on that. So unless there's something else, I'll read the resolution and we'll move forward with the vote. Anyone else? Whereas on September 6th, 2015, at approximately 8:20, a message to the inbox of the school district Facebook page was sent, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A, alerting the school board what one of its members, Grant Nichols, had allegedly commented to a post at approximately 5:06, the same morning on the Star Tribune Facebook page. Whereas a community member sent an email complaint attached as Exhibit B to the school district administration. All school board members, except Member Nichols, members of the press and Islamic and Muslim local organizations, and whereas, the complaint includes a copy of the comments allegedly made by Member Nichols, which contain disrespectful, demeaning, and offensive remarks regarding individuals of the Muslim community. Whereas, school board chair, the school board chair scheduled a meeting for September 9th, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. with Member Nichols. The school board chair, the human resource director, and the superintendent to discuss the Facebook comment, which meeting Member Nichols refused to and did not attend. And whereas, although Member Nichols initially denied, then admitted, and then later again denied making the comment himself, the Star Tribune online conversation thread and online article attached as Exhibits C and D respectively demonstrate convincingly that Member Nichols made the offensive remarks himself using his, his own Facebook and Star Tribune online credentials. And whereas Member Nichols refused to meet on September 9th, 2015, to discuss the comment, a special-called school board meeting was scheduled and held to discuss these complaints with Member Nichols on September 15th, 2015. Whereas the school board approved core values are community, excellent, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And whereas school board policy 102, equal educational opportunity prohibits unlawful discrimination based on race, color, creed, religion, sex, age, marital status, family status, status with regard to the receipt of public assistance, sexual orientation or disability. And whereas school board policy 413, harassment and violence prohibits offensive or hostile conduct, which is based on the categories listed above in Policy 102. Whereas, school board policy 422.1, respecting the workplace mandates that work, the work environment is free of disrespectful, abusive, or demeaning treatment. And whereas, school board policy 524, technology and internet acceptable use and safety policy prohibits off-school premise electronic communications which cause the student learning or school environment to be substantially and materially disrupted, including electronic communications by school board members. Whereas, the Minnesota Human Rights Act, Chapter 363A, and federal anti-discrimination statutes prohibit unlawful discrimination based upon the categories listed above in Policy 102. And whereas, school board policy 209, Code of Ethics, requires all school board members to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and regulations and all policies adopted by the school board, including those referenced above. And whereas, school board member Nichols has violated the spirit and/or letter of the school board policies and school board approved core values with which he has a legal and ethical obligation to comply. Whereas, school board member Nichols has engaged in conduct unbecoming of, and inappropriate for a school board member. And whereas, Member Nichols has received notice of the time, place, and object of the meeting conducted on September 15th, 2015, to consider his proposed removal, at which time he had an opportunity to be heard in defense of the proposed removal. Whereas, the school board has considered any defense provided by Member Nichols, as well as statements of impact by the school community. And whereas, the school board has determined that Member Nichols' comments about members of the Muslim community constitute proper cause for the removal of the school board consistent with Minnesota Statute 123B.09. Now therefore be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools. And the motion was by Molly, and the second was by Laura. And Laura, I would ask you to call the roll, please.
Lewis.
Aye.
Landwear.
Nuh.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Motion to censor Member Nichols' comments, or the comments that we were discussing.
Pointless.
I'm going to second it to open up the discussion for censor.
I think we do need to censor, I, I am appalled by these comments. I'm appalled they were made, I was appalled at their lack of security, and I would suggest that, that we do have a policy regarding school board, or school board members' security on their electronic devices. I think it would be good that perhaps Director, perhaps Director Hennigan, if she, if he has experience in this, would suggest that we move forward with a policy that we follow. As we can see, this has had tremendous repercussions because a phone was not left locked, and was vulnerable.
Okay.
But I do think we need to censor what was said.
A censor is a slap on the hands equivalent to the slap on our face as the district, you know, as to where we're at right now. I seconded it to allow discussion, to make sure people were able to at least have a conversation about this, because not censoring means we do nothing. So, and agreeing to censor means, again, slap on the hand at best. Policies after the fact, closing the barn door after the animals are out is... after the fact, closing the barn door after the animals are out, is ludicrous in my mind. That's not the solution to the problem that we have right here. I'm going to allow discussion to continue, but I have a point of question for either...
I think they're discussing...
Is the parliamentarian still here?
Yeah, right there.
Is, can we readdress the motion, or can we re-bring that, the original motion to remove back or not?
I'm sorry.
Are we able to, right now, there's a motion for censor, and we're having a discussion about that. But in the course of that, are we able to bring the original removal motion back or not?
A motion to reconsider would not be in order at this time.
Please leave the doors open for, it's a public meeting.
There's chairs up front.
The motion to reconsider, the main motion, would not be in order at this time, because there's another main motion pending. When this motion is a longer pending motion, it may be considered, the previous motion being...
Okay.
However, the motion is considered, it may be in order at this time. Since the motion failed, whoever's voted no would be...
Okay, so to reconsider, whoever voted no, I mean, would have to...
To make the motion reconsider.
Okay.
Can I get clarification, whoever votes no on this motion?
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
We're talking about making this motion.
Thank you.
What are you saying right now, is because there's a motion on the table, we can, we can't bring that back to reconsider. If this motion does not go to where we would censor, censor, the only way that the other one would be brought back for reconsideration has to be brought back by the individual that voted no. Is that correct?
But we could certainly ask the individual for reconsideration.
You're free to ask members if you would.
Okay. And I think, is now a good time for me to speak on this censor?
Yeah, that's...
Statement? Member Palmer made a statement pointless when it came to, is there a second? And I think that we need to make a stand as much as we can, unfortunately, in this situation, that I'm not okay with a censor. For the amount of discontent that is going to happen in our district, I am not going to be responsible in any way, shape, or form for something as simple as a censor on this matter.
And I respect that, but you understand that if we don't, and I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't, but just so the board is clear, if we don't censor...
Yep.
We're choosing to do nothing, because the motion to remove...
Right. I'm sorry.
Fail, if you understand. I mean, and I've just, so we're making decisions. And at this point, I would have a tendency to agree with Laura Palmer, is that it's pointless. I mean, this is, you know, do we, you know, try to make ourselves look good and say, okay, we did something? Do we do nothing when none of the, the majority of us do not support a censor? You know, so that's the decision of the conversation that has to be had. Member Landwear.
And the reason for the most, is not to make ourselves look good or bad. I really, truly believe we should censor what was said. Obviously, it was deeply offensive. And as a school board did not comment on that, would, I just can't believe that that would happen. So, that's why I'm bringing the motion.
Member Landwear, you just said that the statement that was said was horribly offensive. Is that what you said?
So what are we censoring, because he didn't do it?
How does that line up with you saying that we shouldn't remove him because those comments were made inadvertently by someone else? That doesn't line up well with his, it's either his behavior here, it's the same thing in both places. And I'm struggling to understand your thinking behind that.
Well, I'm not going to re-debate what we just talked about, but as I said in my previous comments, I'm not sure he made those statements, so.
Okay. I would encourage you to re-debate it, because you're, I'm not, I'm confused now as well, because you're encouraging that we censor his behavior in the extremely offensive statements.
That's not the text of the motion.
Tell me, go ahead, give me it exactly.
I move that we censor those statements.
Well, who are we censoring?
The statements made on Facebook.
But the resolution is for a censor, I remember.
I'm not making this resolution. I'm making this a different resolution.
Oh, do you want to withhold?
Huh?
Were you thinking it was a different resolution?
I didn't know who he was talking about, a different one, no?
You need to ask for the resolution.
So, we're going to...
Do we have that resolution in front of us?
No, I believe so. I'm just, I'm making a resolution.
So clarification, you're suggesting we make a resolution to say, we as a board think that whoever said bad, it's really bad. That's what you're suggesting? Because you're not suggesting, are you suggesting we censor...
Please don't put words in my mouth. I'm saying that we...
Asking for clarification.
Yes, I'm saying that we censor that statement, that that was an outrageously offensive statement.
So we're not even censoring Grant then, we're...
No.
Is my understanding that a censor is for a school board member? Am I incorrect in understanding this?
Yes, I think, Member Landwear, your fellow board members need to understand what it is they're discussing, if there's a motion for a new resolution. And, yeah, you really can't censor some other member of the public who...
Okay.
You're talking about, you're talking about Member Nichols here, and either he did it, or he didn't do it.
I guess, I'm sorry, I guess the word I'm looking for is condemn. I meant condemn the statement, not censoring an individual.
But again, you're a governing body of school board members, and in this particular instance, you're governing one another. And you're not governing somebody else who may or may not have made some statement because you think Member Nichols didn't make it. So, condemn, you, that, so that really is no action against Member Nichols then.
Go ahead.
The question is whether we take action as a school board. It would be board action, respectfully, I respect your comments as well. We would take board action tonight regarding these comments. And that's why my intent is bringing forth this motion.
And I guess, I think, if you could please state a motion, that might be helpful for discussion.
That the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools condemns the Facebook post that we were discussing, that's at issue tonight. That's the motion.
I'm not seconding that. Okay, so, here's our choices. We can choose to censor Member Nichols, or we can do nothing. If we want to condemn posts on Facebook, I think that I would encourage you to do that, you know, on your own time. I'm not, as a board, going to start running around and condemning comments. I condemn those comments, but I also know where they came from. So, yes.
Point of order, if you're withdrawing your second, would you, is there anyone else who would second that? Would you ask for a second?
No, I can do that. Anybody else want to second the condemnation of a Facebook post on the Star Tribune website? Second, in second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
All right.
Okay, now back to my, and I apologize, you're right, I should have done it that way. But now, our decision as a board is to deal with board action, and that is the discussion at hand. The meeting at hand tonight is for, and the topic that we're on is the board action is necessary and appropriate regarding complaints against a school board member. So, the choice is to censor or do nothing.
Chair Larkin.
Mm-hmm.
If I might, I was wondering if I could pose a question to Member Landwear before we get into the censorship resolution. And if, and the question is just this, would there be any situation in which you might consider reconsideration of the resolution to remove Member Larkin, Member Nichols?
What are you asking?
At this meeting, would you have any appetite for reconsideration of the first resolution for removal?
I don't know why we would. Can you help me? Why would we?
Well, I'm just saying that if doing nothing is not an option, and before, we're talking about censorship, because it's essentially the same case, and because you are, you voted for the, against the motion the first time, in order to reconsider it, we would need your support. And I was just wondering if there was any way you could see yourself moving toward reconsideration of the first resolution.
I don't think I could, based on what I know.
All right, I just wanted, I wanted to clarify that.
With all due respect.
Can I ask for a point of clarification about the motion to move forward with censorship of Board Member Nichols, not anything else? Is that something that you're comfortable doing?
I would not, I'm not going to stop that motion from moving forward. And am I comfortable? I don't know that Board Member Nichols, I don't know that there's grounds for censoring him, but that's a decision we'll have to make.
It takes a majority.
I would love to hear the discussion.
It takes a majority, so. We can certainly, you can make a motion, we can second, we can have discussion and vote on it at that point, or withdraw, I guess, at that point too. But we wouldn't mean to have an actual discussion about it, someone would need to make a motion to censor Grant Nichols based on the resolution that we have in front of us.
And I guess I'm concerned. And I know that I've said it several times, but I feel like I need to say it one more time, that you would want to hear the discussion about that, to find out if there's grounds for censorship of the comments that he allegedly made, which we believe, I believe he is responsible for. If not, the same comments, and looking at them the same way for the removal. That just, it concerns me.
I'm actually, you know, very concerned about the idea that we're, we're not going to take action on what we see is definitely something that is wrong and needing to be done. And I understand, I'm always uncomfortable with the idea of having to, you know, obviously to remove, remove a board member, but we really don't, I mean, we really should be doing this. Please reconsider.
For our students.
Because, because first, I, it would even be better for Grant. This is not going to be a good situation for him, sitting up here, under constant scrutiny. And you know, these people out here are going to look for more stuff and file another complaint. Because you know what? If I was sitting out there, I would do it too. And I'm sorry to say this, he's my friend. But this is a mockery, he should be here tonight. Censor is, it's kind of insulting to the situation.
I agree.
And...
I'm concerned about what our, what our students and what our teachers...
Well, it looks like we're more worried about us, okay, than we are about the kids.
I am worried about what the board's message is, because it's going to directly have an impact on the kids.
Of course it is.
So, I mean, taking a moment to be concerned about the board, this is the time to do that, because I mentioned earlier, there's a message that's going to be sent, has been sent already.
It has been sent.
And there's, is only one way to change that message. Yes.
I guess to move this forward, I will, I will move the resolution to censor School Board Member Grant Nichols, just so we move forward. I don't want us to take no action as a board. But anyway, I'll make that motion.
Again, I'll second it for discussion. And I, I'm struggling with this, because, again, our only other option is to take no action at all. This is, a censor, censor does nothing to correct the problem that really exists right now. You know, and I guess I said it's more of a slap in the face to the community than it is a slap of his hand for having done something now wrong, if in fact that's what the board decides to do, is to censor his actions.
Actually, I got a kind of a question here. Maybe, maybe somebody from the administration might be able to help. If a student were to do this, what would be the actions that would be followed? And what would be the possible ramifications? If we're talking about a kid.
It'd be following school district policy, and following the things that our counselor has put forward in, in the policy. And for something, as I think one of our students said it earlier, Mr. Kiefer, when he was here, and he said, they would be, in his words, me paraphrasing, punished, and as well they would be. And I don't have the discipline in front of me, but they, the consequences would certainly be severe and swift.
And given some statements, or maybe the extreme, I'm just asking if it was extremely disruptive to the school climate?
Students would not, they have signed our social media policy, and they would not be able to perform like this.
Well, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand if they could be looking at expulsion.
I would refer to our counselor on that, because...
You do have a school board policy, student discipline policy, which allows for a range of consequences. In the case of this particular scenario, fact scenario, if applied in a student context, if you had a significant disruption to the school community, you'd be looking at, in my opinion, you'd be considering minimally a lengthy suspension, if not proposed expulsion.
We expect that from our kids, but not from ourselves.
And I'm still struggling to understand, these resolutions, those of you in the audience aren't reading them, but they are very similar. Many of the statements, word for word. And so I'm struggling to understand, Member Landwear, why you would be okay with moving forward with one, specifically stating, resolution censoring School Board Member Grant Nichols, but not moving forward with the other one, although the information is essentially the same. That does not give a clear message to this board that you're sitting with. And then the board does not give a clear message to our district.
There's no, there's been no vote yet either. And it just takes a majority this time. So, I'm just indicating that, that moving the motion forward does not mean he's asked to, or will be supporting a censor either. So, at this point, that would be the next message that we would be sending as well. So, as far as what we do as a board here. Yes?
I think it's important that you clarify as a board, which is why I asked Member Landwear to make a motion. As Member Lewis is saying, you do have another resolution in your packet for censor. And it, it presumes the factual accuracy of the allegations that have been discussed this evening. So, I think you need to clarify if, what it is exactly that you would be voting on. And the resolution in the packet presumes that you've decided as a board that this in fact occurred, and that Member Nichols is responsible for it. So, and to your point, Member Lewis, if there's, you need to clarify what the motion is. If it's going to be the resolution that is enclosed in your packet, then, just to clarify, I think the point that Chair Larkin and Member Lewis made was that it's inconsistent to censor if the resolution verbiage states that this in fact occurred. If you're saying that it didn't.
And I'm not bringing forth this resolution that's in the packet.
Okay, that's what needs to be clarified, right.
Do you have another new resolution?
Simply motion to censor Member Nichols.
And then, and then to clarify, you would need to have some basis for doing so. What would be the proposed basis for censor if not the resolution enclosed in your packet? What are you censoring him for?
I brought this forward for discussion purposes, just to be clear. If it was up to me, it would be for being reckless with his phone, and causing all this problem for the district.
So that's your motion?
If you're asking me to make a motion, I, okay, yeah, I'll make that motion, sure.
I seconded something based on an assumption that it obviously was incorrect, so...
Okay, I will make that motion.
Your motion is what?
Censoring Member Nichols for being reckless with his phone.
I'll withdraw in a second.
Okay.
So, we're back to another new motion, or the other option is motioning, a motion for censorship based on the resolution that's in there for censor. And I will make a motion to censor, using the resolution that's in our packet. I'll look for a second to open it up for discussion.
I'll second it.
I am not comfortable with the censure, I think I've made that quite clear. But not doing this means we do nothing. And I struggle with that message, going back to Grant Nichols, that we did nothing based on what transpired. I mean, I feel we've already made a huge mistake by not removing him, and to not, and again, it, it sounds ridiculous, and I apologize if it sounds that way, but, you know, to do nothing based on what I know to be fact. And we chose not to remove, um, but to do nothing, the message to, I mean, it's, we've already sent our message to the community, and to our district, and our students, and that's, and that's unfortunate, but now, what do we do with our next message? Because we are about to send another message, and we can choose to do nothing, and we can choose to say that we wanna censor. Yeah, so, I, I'm looking for, I, I'm talking, I'm looking for comment from you guys, because I'm at as much of a loss as you are.
For the listening public, would it be useful to read the censor resolution?
I can, yeah, sure. People haven't heard me talk enough tonight. Um, this would be the resolution for censoring School Board Member Grant Nichols. Whereas, on September 6th, 2015, at approximately 8:20 a.m., a message to the inbox of school district Facebook page was sent, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A, alerting the school board that what, one of its members, Grant Nichols, had allegedly commented to a post at approximately 5:06 a.m. the same morning on the Star Tribune Facebook page. And whereas, a community member sent an email complaint attached as Exhibit B to school board district administration, all school board members except Member Nichols, members of the press, and Islamic and Muslim local organizations. Whereas, the complaint includes a copy of the comment allegedly made by Member Nichols, which contains disrespectful, demeaning, and offensive remarks regarding individuals of Muslim community. Whereas, school board chair scheduled the meeting for September 9th, 2015, at nine a.m. with Member Nichols. The school board chair, the human resource director, and the superintendent to discuss the Facebook comment, which Member Nichols refused to and did not attend. And whereas, although Member Nichols initially denied, then admitted, then later, again, denied, making the comment himself, the Star Tribune online conversation thread and online NPR article attached as Exhibits C and D respectively demonstrate convincingly that Member Nichols made the offensive comment himself, using his own Facebook and Star Tribune online credentials. And whereas, Member Nichols refused to meet on September 9th, 2015, to discuss the comment, a special call board meeting was scheduled and held to discuss these complaints with Member Nichols on September 15th, 2015. Whereas, the school board approved core values are community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And whereas, school board policy 102 equal educational opportunity prohibits unlawful discrimination based on race, color, creed, religion, sex, age, marital status, familial status, status with regard to the receipt of public assistance, sexual orientation, or disability. And whereas, school board policy 413 harassment and violence prohibits offensive or hostile conduct, which is based on the categories listed above in policy 102. Whereas, school board policy 422.1, respect in the workplace mandates that the work environment is free of disrespectful, abusive, or demeaning treatment. And whereas, school board policy 524, technology and internet acceptable use and safety policy prohibits off-school premises electronic communications, which causes the student learning or school environment, environment to be substantially materially disrupted, including electronic communications by school board members. And whereas, the Minnesota Human Rights Act, Chapter 363A, and federal anti-discrimination statutes prohibit unlawful discrimination based upon the categories listed above in policy 102. And whereas, school board policy 209, Code of Ethics, requires all school board members to comply with local, state, and federal laws and regulations and all policies adopted by the school board, including those referenced above. Whereas, School Board Member Nichols has violated the spirit and/or letter of the school board policies and the school board approved core values, with which he has a legal and ethical obligation to comply. Whereas, School Board Member Nichols has engaged in conduct unbecoming of and inappropriate for a school board member. Whereas, Member Nichols has received notice of the time, place, and object of the meeting conducted on September 15th, 2015, to consider his proposed censure. And whereas, the school board was, school board has considered any response provided by Member Nichols, as well as statements of impact by the school community. Whereas, the school board has determined that Member Nichols' comment about the members of the Muslim community constitutes the proper cause for censure, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, Number 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools, as follows. Member Nichols is hereby censured for his unprofessional, inappropriate conduct, which is unbecoming of a school board member, and which reflects negatively upon his leadership role as a member of the school board and of Independent School District, Number 13. Member Nichols is hereby warned that any further similar conduct or other conduct which fails to comply with obligations of school board member for Columbia Heights Public Schools may result in further consequences, including but not limited to his removal from the school board pursuant to Minnesota Statute 123B.09. The School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools reaffirms and reiterates its commitment to abide by all state and federal laws and regulations and all school board policies, and to serve as positive role models in the spirit of the school board approved core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So, that's the resolution. Um, and I guess I'm, I'm looking for input on to thoughts. Molly? For censor, I mean, but...
I'm just, I'm very disappointed, and I'm very sad and worried about moving forward with this, because we didn't move forward with the resolution to remove him, to remove Member Nichols. That being said, I understand that doing nothing is also not an option. I don't know how much of a step above doing nothing this is.
Agreed.
But I do support censoring Member Nichols, because I need, I, I, I want the community to understand that I do believe his statements to have been true, and that I do believe that it was very hurtful to the Muslim population, to the students in this district.
I wanna say, I do believe, um, as I made the motion earlier, I do believe in censoring Member Nichols, because of the hurtful things that have been, that have happened. Um, I just don't believe with all these fact statements and the whereas's, so, that's the reason, that's, that's how I will make my decision. But I wanna make it clear, I do believe in censoring him for what has happened.
The resolution on the table states all of those policies, whereas's, so...
Yes, I'm aware of that.
As you move forward to, you make your decision on that, that's, in essence, what you're either agreeing or disagreeing to, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Question for the parliamentarian. Um, if we were to move forward and we were to censor, is there, when this meeting is done tonight, are we done with the removal? Or is it, or does the same thing apply at a later date? Can the, the naysayer re-bring it up again?
That might be more of a question for, that's a question.
Okay. Got it. Okay, I'll ask her that. Karen, I have a question for you. My question was directed in properly, so I'm coming back to you. Um, if we agree to censor tonight, is there anything that would, I don't know, would the, the, the no vote need to be, I mean, is there anything that would allow us to bring this back to the table again in the future, other than another misconduct, or how would...
I wouldn't recommend it. From a process standpoint, as I've said several times tonight, he's had all the process that's due, he's chosen not to avail himself of it, he's not entitled to anything else, and I, and I, no, I don't, there wouldn't be another opportunity to bring the same allegations forward for reconsideration, unless there's been some additional, um, alleged misconduct. Does that answer your question?
So...
No?
When we're, yeah, yeah, I just said so. When we're done with this tonight, we're done with this.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Laura, do you have any thoughts or comments?
As the superintendent of the school district and ex-official member of the board, I would like to urge the voting members of this board to take some action. Because although we are at a disadvantage, because we are down one member, and, um, and so it is, it is really pinning on one vote, it appears we cannot reach a, um, a resolution of gravitas that the board would have expected. And so, I would hate to think we would be facing students tomorrow without any action. So I would urge you to strongly consider this resolution.
Okay. And I guess my statement to this, to that is that I, I would agree wholeheartedly that, uh, my belief was that Member Nichols needed to be removed, and he needed to be removed tonight. Um, due process was provided, and, um, as a result of a sta, wording in a statute, um, that did not take place. But I would also say, knowing that, I don't agree with this, and don't think it's anywhere near the discipline that it should be, that to walk away doing nothing is even worse, because then the message to that is, I truly got away with this. So, um, I am going to say that I would consider the, the censure, because the only other option is, is we do nothing. And I agree with Superintendent Kelly, to walk out of this room, having done nothing, I don't know that our message can get much worse than what we've already sent, but it, it would truly be, in my mind, it would be a worse message, so... Any other questions or comments? There's a motion on the table to censor School Board Member Grant Nichols. Yes?
And again, I just wanna repeat, I am in favor of censoring Grant, Member Nichols, but I'm just not in favor of this motion.
That's fine. You, yeah, and that, and I, and I hope that the community in general recognizes how the process took place tonight, and what actually did happen, um, and what is about to happen regarding the voting here and that. And it doesn't change anything, the, we are a board, and we are expected to move forward as one once decisions are made. I will do my best as a board member and a board chair to move forward as a whole board, but I will do it, making my public statement tonight, knowing that I absolutely not agree with the, the direction and the decisions that we've made as a board tonight. Um, but I, I want that to be clear, that I, I did not support this. I, I know what is true. Um, I'm sorry that my word and my reputation is not, um, strong enough or valuable enough, or I don't know what the word is I would use, to convince Member Landwear that this conversation did in fact happen, and he did in fact admit to doing it. Um, so I am walking out of here, whether you're offended or not, feeling like you're calling me a liar. So I want that for the record. We're all about transparency. It's your big word. I'm being transparent. I'm walking out of here tonight feeling like I'm being called a liar. The district made a difficult decision to move forward with this. How easy would it have been to say, oops, your phone got hacked, don't do it again? We wouldn't be having this conversation tonight. So decisions were made, difficult decisions were made, and we moved forward. And unfortunately, a statute that dictates that we need four people to remove a board member prevented that from happening tonight. So, I wanna clear, because I am going to do my best as a board member and a board chair to move forward as a whole, because we have to try to do that. I saw your hand the first time, Ted, I'll get to you in just a second, that we, and I, I mentioned this to, to Molly, I mentioned this to Laura, is we need to, because that's, that's the oath we took, and that's the promise we made, is that we move forward as one. Decisions have been made. You don't have to support that decision, and I think it's clear who does and who does not, but we need to try and do what's best for the districts and the, and the kids moving forward. So, I would ask you to keep that mind, in mind as you walk out of here tonight, that we need to try and come back to this table, well, we're gonna be back at this table in a little bit for a work session, but come back to this table, um, as a board. So, Ted?
Oh, I just wanted to say, I think your statements there, your, about me, are very unprofessional.
I appreciate it.
I would hope that we would act on a higher level than that.
Can I call the question?
Yep, you sure can. And, uh, yes. Okay, so we are, uh, resolution, uh, motion by me. Sir?
Yes, if there's any objection to the call question?
Oh, okay. Does that mean we'd be able to keep talking?
Uh, if, if there is an objection, then a vote would need to be taken on the call question, it would be a two-minute vote, but I recommend asking if there's any objection first.
Okay, is there any objection to the call for the question? Okay, so then if now we're not, take it to a vote.
On the motion.
On the motion, okay. And just for clarification, I think, believe I made the motion, and Molly, you seconded it, is that correct?
Yes.
To censor? Okay. Uh, Laura, call the roll.
Lewis?
Aye.
Landwear?
Nay.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, uh, that was the last item that we had on the, um, the board action, and from Forrest.
We don't have a copy of the statement.
Oh, okay, yeah. Copy of Grant's, um...
Thank you, Ted.
Statement, in lieu of his appearance. Okay, um, sadly, at this point, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 9:17.